Counselor Broderick.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Yeah.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Rita Mercier.
Yeah.
For present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Also, Counselor Annika Zanjian is present, City Manager, Auditor Cheryl Wright, and Mr. Moses. This is a long overdue meeting with the, first, I think, with the auditor as part of the Auditor Oversight Subcommittee. Since bringing Ms. Wright on, we have had DOR recommendations and so on. And I know we talked about doing a review to see where we're at with our reports, our accounting and everything. But we thought it'd be a good idea to wait till DOR was in and gone and we made the changes, and then kind of lagged, and then thought it'd be a good idea to wait for the new council. So here we are. Thank you for the many reports. It's obviously going to be difficult to read through these this evening. Maybe I'll ask the rest of the councils here if they have any questions. But maybe what we could do, Madam Auditor, is have you give us a run-through of what these are, what the purpose is, and maybe just an overview of what's in them and why.
Absolutely. Basically, what I've done is I've given you two documents. The first document I prepared, basically going over the highlighted things that I've changed since I've taken the position, believe it or not, a year ago. The second is a report that was prepared by our own Internal Finance Committee that deals with the management letter and the DOR report. I'd like to go over the highlights of my accomplishments update first. I'll go through the highlights. If you have questions, just stop me and I'll be gladly, I'll be glad to review it all with you. I've broken it up into categories: accounting issues, payroll issues, vendor payment issues, budget purchasing issues, the reports that I've completed, and ongoing projects. The first are the accounting issues. If you recall, the Department of Revenue's report had discussed agency accounts that have been set up by my predecessors. What I've, what I've done is really review forty of those accounts, all the way back to 1999, and closed each of those accounts to where they belong. What was happening over the years is at the end of a fiscal year, they would take any surplus appropriations, move the money into those accounts, and then expend the following year without legal appropriation. This obviously is something that shouldn't ever have been done. So what I did was do all the research I had to. Some were closed to special revenue accounts, some were closed to the general fund, they were closed to the appropriate accounts. That's something that the Department of Revenue wanted. I reviewed it with the auditors, and they're all on board with it. The account reconciliations, you're going to notice a lot of these.
Sure.
So when you say "agency," what do you mean by "agency"? Is that a city department?
No. An agency account is an account that really are funds that don't belong to us. It's the police outside detail. The Council on Aging, travel accounts, it's accounts that we hold for someone else.
Okay.
So they were using it as kind of a wash through.
What about the McKenney Fund? McKenny?
That's a trust fund. That's a trust fund.
That's a trust fund?
The trust funds were fine.
They were?
Right.
How many, how many funds did you close? How many accounts, rather?
Forty accounts in the agency.
Forty. Okay. Do you have a dollar amount approximately what that amounted to?
It was about a million three. If it'll later date, I can run down and get you the numbers exactly.
Oh, that's fine. You just closed them out, you closed them out the appropriate accounts, so.
Correct. And I went through the Department of Revenue with all of these. I went through the auditors with all of these, and I got their blessing.
So where would those funds have gone to? The particular line items that had to be in place, I mean, accounts that were in place?
They, well, if you could repeat that question. Where'd they go to? It would depend on, there were accounts that were for the GM fund for five years ago that were appropriated in the general fund. They were just sitting there, and they were using it and expending it for all sorts of things. That was general fund money. That went back to the general fund. There were accounts that were just regular end-of-year appropriations for the Department of Revenue, I mean, excuse me, Department of Public Works, MIS. All these accounts should have been closed to the general fund.
So shouldn't that show up as the unreserved fund balance?
Actually, yes.
Okay.
Could we get a breakdown of those, you know, run a report for next week or something? Was this all done prior to this year, clearing everything, the books with the DOR?
Correct.
So everything has been swept through and everything's okay and it's good with DOR?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a couple more accounts that I need to do research on, but just literally two.
I'm sorry, Counselor Zanjian?
We close these agencies, these accounts, like for the police, and where are we putting the money now? Are we holding money from a general fund or?
We put the money where it belonged, whether it be general funds, special revenue funds. We move the money back into the accounts that they belonged in originally.
Okay, so in other words, if you're holding money for the police, it goes in the police budget account? Is that correct?
If that's where it belonged.
Okay, all right, okay.
It would be good if we did have the breakdown, Cheryl, just so that we can know how much, like, was in the Council on Aging account that?
No, that would stay there. The Council on Aging account would stay there. Because they have this travel account, people put money in it, they pay for the trips with it.
Oh, I see.
That's an agency account. That stayed where it belonged.
Okay.
Okay. We roll right into account reconciliation. On top of the agency funds, we have over a thousand funds. A lot of these, these state grants for the school department have been in deficit for over five years. At the end of each year, what they would do is cover it with surplus revenues, so it didn't look like we had a deficit, and then would uncover at the end of the year.
Who's "they"?
My prior.
Is it city or school department?
No, city.
Okay, all right, because if the school department accounts, I was, so it's school building?
Right, right. Prior auditor.
Okay.
The school department actually didn't even know a lot of these deficits existed. So I sat with each and every department head, reviewed all of these, and one account, they actually have to go to the Senate and Legislature for because it's past the time they can request the money. They've gotten the approval, we haven't gotten the money yet. So each of these accounts, we really had to do a lot of research, met with departments. Departments are thrilled that they're actually finding out what's going on in their accounts.
Could we also get that breakdown? I know there's going to be a lot of paperwork, and maybe we can have some follow-up meetings to see, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of money moving around or potentially moving around and being covered. And if we had negative balances, does that mean it cost us money out of our general fund?
What would end up happening is at the end of the year, they'd reduce your free cash by all these accounts. But what my, the prior auditor would do is cover them at the end of the year, and after the auditor's left, he'd reverse all his entries, so we'd back to deficits. So instead of actually dealing with these issues, he was just covering up for the end of the year.
So how did you deal with them?
What I did was do the research, find out whose account it was, what happened. Like I said, meet with department heads, have their project managers do the research, find out what happened here. Did they not request the money? When the money came in, was it put in the wrong account?
Okay. And what do we do if there's a negative balance?
If there's a negative balance, we're still working on those.
Okay, all right. Counselor Elliott?
Okay. Yep. I don't want to keep you too far off track, but I noticed in the packet the management letter from the 2006 audit.
Yes.
Have we seen, council seen the results of the fiscal 2007 audit?
No, not, not the management letter. We're in the process of still working with the auditors on that.
So the audit, though, is complete?
Yes.
The DOR accepted it, and we're still waiting for the management letter?
Right.
Okay, all right. Any, any idea when that's, when that'll be done?
We're meeting with the auditors in three weeks, I think.
Right. I would anticipate that that, you should have that by the second week of March, thereabouts. There's still some issues that are outstanding there, but we've made, you'll see that we've made substantial amount of progress.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for having this meeting. I think it's very important. I just have one concern about our bonding and so forth. I would like to know, how far are we out there on our bonding? Are we in stable financial ground and so forth? And that's, I don't know if I'm interjecting something that you haven't been talking about, but that's my concern, that make sure that we're on a good, stable foundation on the bonding.
I was going to say.
So.
We're, we're in better shape than we were a year ago, two years ago. What we've done in fiscal 2007 is really put a halt on the, the using of the fund balance, in part because we were forced to. We didn't have any free cash to use to support the budget. So it's much easier to, to do that when you don't have the money. But our balance sheet is in better shape. Our bonding has, we've issued some new bonds, but in a large part, they've replaced bonds that we've paid off. So we really haven't added a whole lot in bonding over the last year, and, and it slowed up particularly in the last six months or so. That doesn't mean it's not going to be a challenge. The upcoming year and in future years are going to be a challenge to balance budgets, but we're in pretty good shape to do so.
I just have one last comment, Mr. Chairman. I know Manager Lynch and his staff is well aware, we're all aware, of the, the budget coming from Beacon Hill. And the governor has inserted in that budget casino gambling and so forth, so about $600 million. And I'm just concerned if that doesn't pass by the legislature. We could have a void and local aid and so forth. So I just want to be on safe footing and make sure that we're not extending ourselves.
Sure.
Because for when I've been tall, tighten your belt and be prepared. So I just, I would rather be pessimistic rather than optimistic, so.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, you and I had spoken the other day in preparation for this meeting when you asked me to be here, and the, the expectation would be that later tonight or at a subsequent meeting of this subcommittee, that we would, the CFO and I would have some information regarding our current financial situation and our expectations for fiscal year '09. But just for a short editorial comment on that, you're correct. It's going to be a very tight year for us. We, we're going over some numbers earlier today on where we think that's going to be, and we are, Mr. Moses is correct, and he knows it better than, than any of us really, that how tight the budget is going to be in the upcoming year, given the state aid reductions or failure to make any increase in those. With regards to the bonding, I think it's important to point out, as Mr. Moses has, that we're, we're trying very hard to manage our borrowing such that we're not taking on new debt or new levels of debt within the budget. That doesn't mean we're not going to bond. I think it's important that we recognize that if we're going to do the things that are necessary in order to maintain the infrastructure of the city, we're going to have to, we're going to have to borrow money. You know, just at the last meeting, Counselor Mercier raised the issue that, of the lights at Colley, and that's clearly a capital need that we have and one that we borrow money for. You know, certainly the doing things on the roads, the sidewalks, the public facilities, some of our equipment, we need to address those issues because it's really affecting our ability to run the city most effectively. And then the other point on that is, you know, we do have certainly the CSO project and other, and water projects that are moving forward that the council has supported in the past and will probably be asked in the future to support again. But typically, those are funded, of course, through user fees. So that's a little bit better. But as Mr. Moses said, we're, the bottom line of our financial condition is the audit will show you, as the Department of Revenue spoke to in the letter that you received a copy of last week, the city's in far better shape today than it was about a year ago. So we're, but we are in a very tight, it's all different levels of our financial condition. And as far as the budget in the upcoming year, it is going to be a tight year.
Just, just one last comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to hear you say, Mr. Manager, that we have to address our infrastructure, and we must. And for decades, it's been neglected, and we have to address that. And I certainly would welcome a capital plan, bonding and so forth, to address some of the streets and sidewalks in our city. Thank you.
Counselor Rita Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I'm very concerned about the levy limit. How far away are we from that? I, I don't know why, but I'm nervous about it.
A couple of years ago, the Legislature, oh, the levy limit, okay, not the debt limit, because they're two separate things. We're still $5 million away.
We're $5 million away?
Right.
Okay.
So we have that capacity if we choose to use it. But I know that everyone's concerned about taxes, and, and they prefer to keep it low.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, to, to bounce back, I did talk to the mayor about piggybacking this, but obviously, it's, we've had over a year here with, with you and a lot of changes, so we may not get to the, the, the budget, but hopefully we can get that going in subsequent meeting. Ms. Wright, you were?
Yeah. This is back, this is the financial infrastructure. It's, it's not quite as, as crazy as speaking about Colley Stadium, but these are the basics. These are the basic building blocks we need to have stability. I'm doing the research all the way back to '99 to make sure everything is in its right place. You'll see that the agencies, the Department of Revenue, looked at things like these, looking at the financial management of the city. So all these small things that we're doing, and some of them are big, actually help in all other respects of the finances. Cash reconciliation. Well, when I came in here, I took a look at cash, and basically, we found that although they said cash was balanced at the end of '06, cash was never really balanced at the end of '06. It basically, there was an adjustment made to balance to the treasurer's books. We looked at it all the way back to 2005, at the beginning of 2005, and cash really hadn't been reconciled all the way back to then. We brought in somebody that actually went and took every single bank statement and reconciled the treasurer's records to the bank statements, and we made the adjustments there. Cash is reconciled to the general ledger at the end of this fiscal year. That was, that was a big thing to actually have had done. Are we doing it? Is cash reconciled two weeks after the end of the month? No. But cash is reconciled. What we're doing now is working on the finer aspects of it all to get it down to a level where, at the end of the month, will be reconciled. There's a lot of things that we've been doing. Yes?
Yeah, quick question. I'm sorry, I don't want to get you off track. Who reconciles? Who's responsible for that? Or is it multiple people?
The treasurer reconciles to the bank statements, then the bank statements are reconciled to the general ledger.
By who?
I reconcile the bank statement, I mean, excuse me, the general ledger to the treasurer's records.
So treasurer first?
The treasury reconciles to the bank statements. So if the treasury is not reconciling to the bank statements, I can't reconcile to the treasurer's records. So we had basically somebody come in and reconcile the treasurer's records. Then from that point, I could then take it and reconcile it to the general ledger. What we're doing is we're putting a lot of things in place to help the treasury do this function. What we're, what we're finding is, what wasn't happening is voids weren't being reconciled and voided through the general ledger. They'd never been reconciled in that way. So in all actuality, it was impossible to reconcile cash. If you're voiding a check at the bank, and you're not voiding it through my general ledger, you're never going to match. So we had to go back to the basics. We started voiding checks through the system. We started having them go through each and every bank statement and ticking and tie, tying every single one. We've closed the old payroll and vendor accounts and started new accounts. It's like, let's stop this here, almost like stop the bleeding, and moving on. We had everything reconciled to that point. Now we're on the new bank statements. We've met with the bank. The bank is going to now give us tapes to actually feed into the general ledger to reconcile all those outstanding checks. Now, that, that's so beneficial. That we're working with the treasury on now. They haven't started doing it yet, but we're just about at that point. So we're doing as much as we can to help the treasury do what they need to do.
So as of tonight, we're still not reconciled? Or how far, how far back are we?
I'm working on December right now.
Of?
Receive.
'07?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right. Receivables are all reconciled. We're now working on the cash.
But prior to you coming, how far back had cash not been reconciled?
Excuse me?
Before you came, what was the, I know there was quite a backlog, and there was a staff shortage in the treasurer's office. How many months was there a backlog?
They were back, well, back to February, February of '05.
'05, okay. Well, that's good news.
So we caught up to the end of the fiscal year, and now they're probably about three, four months behind.
Thank you.
But needless to say, we've made great strides, but we have a long way to go. Okay. Journal entries, I have a three-ring binder with my journal entries. That's something that'll go away in the audit. Sale of property, that's been rectified. Long-term debt has all been booked. I've gone through and done the four school audits that were outstanding when I came on board.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, so do we have any outstanding now?
No.
Okay. Because there was, there was, in addition to these, there were a number of others that were cleared up, right?
Those thirteen were all taken care of.
So thirteen done.
Were resolved. The four.
And now, and now these four. And the stock losses included in this?
Yes.
In this group of four?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And also, we went to the SBA last week. They've developed a new plan about getting reimbursed. It's an interactive web-based system, so we got training on that. Once all the paperwork is in to the SBA, we can start on a weekly basis, putting in the invoices and get reimbursed on a monthly basis. So that's going to be great for our cash flow. It's not like, and they're auditing as we go along, so we're not going to get, okay, you know, where are all the invoices? Because we're going to send them in on a monthly basis. It's going to be so much easier.
So is that what we're going to do in the Maury?
Yes.
The Maury School?
Yes. Yes. Audit as you go. It's a good thing. Payroll issues. When I came on board, I was getting bills for over $150,000 on a weekly basis. The W-2s for 2003 were never filed properly with the IRS. I actually had to go in and load some old software to get it done. Happy to say that we, the bill for $150,000, we made go away, and...
Who was the bill from? IRS?
Uh-huh.
Was it a penalty?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yes.
When you say "never," how long is "never"? When you said that the process, I, I really didn't catch that, to be honest with you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm deaf and wany, I can't hear you.
Well, when you said this had never been done, or it hasn't been done, how long has it not been done, that you had to correct this problem?
Well, since 2003.
Three. So we're not accruing interest in penalties since that time?
Right.
And how much is that?
Well, I got two bills for $150,000. We had the IRS come in, they got the new file, and they, thank God, made it go away. All right. And then we were getting actually...
They made the penalties go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That was, I was getting it.
Yes. We were, we were getting monthly bills, too, because we were sending in our, our tax payments two days too late all along. We've had the treasury send them in on time since they came in.
Excuse me, who sends in the W-2s?
The W-2s were sent in by the treasurer and the auditor.
Okay. And the payments you're referring to, there have consistently been two days?
The treasury.
Okay. And, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cheryl, do you do something in the auditors' department with the school teachers, and you send something to Boston for them?
Yes.
Explain to me a little bit about what you do there.
Okay.
Does it go on like a microfilm?
Yes. That, that rolls right into my next bullet point, the school holdback.
Mm-hmm.
What they were doing on a weekly basis, like, if you were a school teacher?
Right.
You had the option of getting paid 42 weeks or 52 weeks.
Right.
If you decided to get paid 52 weeks of the year, instead of taking your yearly salary, dividing it by 52 and giving it to you all year?
Mm-hmm.
What they would do is give you your check based on 42 weeks, and then take money back, put it in a separate account, and then use that money to pay during the summer. Now, what that was doing is actually, it was skewing the calculations for the mass state teachers via federal tax, via state tax. The mass state teachers actually got to the point where if a teacher was owed a refund, they would not give them the refund until we cleaned up our act.
Yes, and may I say that when I was the mayor in 2002 and 2003, that was the number one hotbed issue, that teachers would finally be retiring and, and get notices from Boston stating?
Exactly.
We don't have this properly brought over here or sent over here.
Exactly.
And I have not heard any of that lately, and believe me, I would have. And so I want to compliment you.
Thank you.
For getting that straight, because it's a very discouraging thing when you're about to retire, think you're getting X number of dollars, and it's all messed up in Boston.
Exactly.
And believe me, I haven't heard one iota of any problems, so thank you for smoothing that over.
You're welcome.
And while I'm on this subject, I want to say another thing. I think we're very fortunate to have you, in that I attended a, a very important night for the, sitting in for the mayor who had to go to Boston. And I was there with the city manager when $95,000 was given in grant money to like 30 cultural and, and art events and, and entities. And they would have only received like $50,000 to disperse amongst all those people and all those groups, but they couldn't begin to tell us how thrilled they were with you for finding $45,000 that would have been left, you know, hidden somewhere.
Right.
And you, through all your research, found it. I think we're very lucky to have someone like you. And I, I just want to say that I'd be the first to criticize anybody, but I'll be the first to give you compliments when you deserve them, and you certainly do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's like, that's, that's the evidence of the work I've been doing, doing all the research. You know, some you'll find in the positive, some you'll find in the negative, but things belong where they belong, and I'm putting them back where they belong.
And you're doing it, and I can see that. It's quite evident. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I was going to say similar, is that, you know, we're getting the good with the bad, which I appreciate, because a lot of times, the bad gets swept away or ignored.
Oh, no.
And this is exactly why, you know, I voted for you to get you on board, because I was hoping you would be able to do this, and it's, it's already paying off. If, before you go on, if, Mr. Manager, if we could get maybe, we're getting the auditor side or version here of changes, could we get an update from what's happened on the treasurer's end? So some of the stuff that's been slipping for years, what's, which, I know we have done some outside, I don't mean right now, but, you know, at a future meeting in terms of what's been done. I know we've had some outside hires for help or whatever, help clean things up.
Absolutely. We can give you an update on, particularly on the work that Mr. Manzi has done when he's, he's come on to help us. But part of that Cheryl has already spoken to, and she was talking about the reconciliation of cash. That was a major part of bringing Paul Manzi on as a, to do the work for us in terms of getting that reconciliation work done.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Cheryl?
And the other piece of the work that Paul Manzi's doing is, we had outstanding checks sitting on the books back to the eighties. And that's all stuff that had to get researched from the treasurer's end, because you just can't take and close them out to the general fund. They need to be advertised, all the research needs to be done. And this is kind of like the phase two of that whole thing. We're having him do the work, and we'll get all the outstanding checks straightened away. Okay. Now I went off on a tangent. Okay. If there's no other questions on the holdback?
While, while we're on the reconciliation of cash and the checks, one of the recommendations was to put a, to establish practices, excuse me, or procedures in place in the treasurer's office. Is that, is that being done, or is it done? And that was part of the consultant's work, wasn't it?
Right.
That's correct.
We're partway there.
Okay.
We are partway there.
I mean, that didn't start, I'm, I'm trying to think, it was, was it September, October, before we brought the consultant on?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. On the accruals, I plan on putting your sick and vacation time on your paychecks. Um, okay. On the accruals, I plan on putting your sick and vacation time on your paychecks. So, at the end of the year, we actually know the liability. My, uh, I first intended doing that in two thousand and seven, then I was going to do it January first of this year. Unfortunately, I've been held up, um, because of the Police Department. Sick and vacation time, they're using the Laramore System, which accrues sick and vacation, and different increments than we do in the payroll system. So, right now, we have the Police Department's going back and reconciling all their sick and vacation time back from the past three years, because garbage in, garbage out. I, I'm not putting those balances on my system when I know full well they're not being accrued the same way the payroll is. They should've been reconciling the payroll records that they submit on a weekly basis to their own timekeeping, and that hasn't been done. So, right now, they're reconciling all their sick and vacation time, all the way back, and in July, July first, is when I'll implement this.
Is that the responsibility of the Police Department, Human Resources, or who does that?
Well, the problem with the Police Department is they have their own system. So, it's up to them to submit sick and vacation time on the payroll on a weekly basis, and be accurate. But they're accruing their time on a different system with different increments. So, each day is eight hours versus seven point four-four hours. So, everybody needs to get on the same page. And what's good about this, if I hadn't been trying to put the accruals up, we never would've found this. So, it's like you're uncovering stuff, it's, it's put a hold for six months, but you know what? In the long run, we'll all be better off, because we're going to get all their time correct. So, um, which the accruals don't seem like a big thing, but people will really enjoy having them on their payroll. They know how much time they have, and guess what? If I look at my paycheck and, "I didn't take a sick day," you know what? You go to the payroll person that day, it doesn't get carried over for years. You rectify, you rectify it then and there.
If I could, just for one quick point on that, that, uh, I think when Cheryl speaks of the Laramore System, that's a management system that we utilize in the Police Department for pretty much all of the operations, but they, in doing that, they also keep track of their, their personnel, because it has that module built in. The, uh, what really prompted us to identify this problem was the requirement that the city was not complying with under GASB, uh, Government Accounting Standards Board of posting all of the accrued time on our books, uh, which is now a requirement in order to get a clean audit, that you actually have to show how much you have in accumulated sick time sitting there, out there, that's a, out there as a liability.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all right, now onto the vendor payment issues. Vendor checks. When I, when I arrived here, I, I couldn't believe they were running a big check run once a month. It's like, why are you doing that? So, basically, what I've done is move everything up. We do a weekly check run. It helps, on a timely basis, paying your bills on time. It helps budget-wise. It helps just, you know, processing-wise. You're not getting this big glut at the end of the month with all these invoices. So, I mean, it's, it's a little thing that makes a big difference. It saves time, saves money. And, and your vendors are getting paid on a much, a, a, a timely basis, and we really weren't before.
When we weren't paying on time, were we accruing interest and penalties from these vendors as well?
At times, at times. Right, oh, I thought you- Uh, the next issue with avoided checks, I've already actually addressed that under the reconciliation.
Um, you, you've mentioned in your report, you've virtually eliminated manual checks?
Yes.
Is that right?
They were doing manual checks for everything.
How many, how many checks were we doing, and how many are we doing now?
I, I'm guessing they were probably doing twenty-five a week.
So, you just, just wire transfers, and they're getting-
They, they were manually writing checks out of a checkbook.
Correct.
And so, eh, that's crazy. It's 'cause they couldn't wait the month to pay something. So, it's, everything should be running through the system. Nothing should be running outside of the system.
Okay.
And actually, I'm glad you said that.
I agree.
Uh, mentioning the wire transfers, they were booking wire transfers like a JV. Well, if you miss one, that's part of your reconciliation issue. So, what I'm having to redo is run a wire transfer just like a warrant, just like a regular expense, so everything goes through the system. It doesn't go around the system. I mean, all these little things add up to making reconciliations easier.
What's a JV?
Uh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
A journal entry. They manually do a debit and credit, instead of allowing the system doing what they needed, the system does, and it does it well. Um, budget and purchasing issues. Um, I post about the two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight budget. What is unique about this is I'm putting up all the revenues. The revenues weren't always being put up in the system. And, and I don't know how you can look at a budget report and know where you are if you don't know what you're aiming at. So, something simple like that makes things just so much easier.
Could, uh, I know you've been giving us reports periodically. Could we get an update as to where we're at with our revenues versus projections and actual costs?
Absolutely.
Super.
Yes, you just did one.
Right. We'll, we'll get one for the, end of the next quarter, would that be satisfactory?
Yeah, that's good.
Um, contracts. Not all contracts were running through my office. Um, legally, I need to sign a contract saying that the appropriation is there. Uh, I'm now manually signing every single contract, and as I do it, I'm putting account numbers down. I'll get an account, and I don't, I won't know the funding source. I'll call the department, say, "Where are you getting the mon, the money from?" So, I'm actually keeping control in that way, making sure we have the funding for a contract.
Eh, when you say contract, you mean every contract?
Yes.
Purchases, the whole bit?
Yes.
How many is that?
Oh, God, how many contracts do we have a year? Hundreds.
Yeah. Okay, so everything is being signed, you're, you're signing off on every single one?
Yes.
Stapling, okay, great.
Yes. If I'm gonna be responsible, I wanna see it, know what it is, and know where it's coming from. Uh, purchase orders. Um, part of the problem with the agency funds before is at the end of the year, they would liquidate all the purchase orders and then manually move it to the agency fund. What I did is reset the system. When you have a purchase order at the end of the year, if it's for something you actually bought in the prior year but didn't get invoiced for, it should stay on the system and roll in the system. So, I actually reset the system so it's, it's take, keeping track of all the purchase orders and purchases for the prior year. It brings the money forward with it, and it, and it actually does legally the way it was supposed to be done originally. It was a culture shock for a lot of the department heads, but now that they're realizing, oh, oh, they're all liking it, because it's doing, uh, doing the accounting for you. It's, it's keeping track of last year's bills versus this year's bills, and it keeps them separated. So, I've actually changed that. I've been working with the sub, the Finance Subcommittee on re-engineering procurement. We're looking at our purchasing, our total purchasing and way we do things, our processing, um, our buying. And we've actually put a package together, which we're in the process of giving to the manager, and it will be rolling out somewhere in the near future. Uh, we've spent a lot of time on this. We've looked at other communities. We've done our research. Uh, we wanna make it as easy as possible for everybody. Save time, save money.
If I, if I could just comment on that, the, the, pretty much the observation that we made when we, uh, came on was that the, the purchasing system here in the city is, um, has been somewhat archaic and overly burdensome to the departments. Uh, and, uh, it's really, ends up costing the city money in many cases, and also, uh, isn't quite as nimble as we'd like it to be in terms of being able to, uh, order, uh, items and receive items quickly. Uh, in addition to that, I know it's been a council, uh, concern that we're sometime, we oftentimes are not able to buy from local vendors. And that's, in, in part, it's, it's in part due to the requirement of bidding under the state law that we have to follow. But it's also due to the manner in which we've bought things in the past that, uh, have made it near impossible for local vendors to compete. So, the system that we're putting in place now, that we're, that I've asked the, uh, the Finance Staff Committee to work on, uh, Mr. Moses, and, and obviously, the Auditor's been a key part of that team, is designed to streamline that procurement, make it easier for people to, uh, to purchase, and give them more flexibility in terms of where they're getting it, but at the same time, ensuring that we're getting the best bang for our buck. So, it will, uh, I'll, I'll have a report to the, uh, Council on that in the near future, but also, there may be some council actions that we need. To show you how archaic the system is, we actually found on the books, um, that, uh, I don't know if I, don't hold me to this now, because we're telling you it's on the books. We're supposed to advertise for every purchase we make over fifty dollars. If we advertised for every purchase we made over fifty dollars, we would spend a hundred dollars for every item that we had to buy. Uh, so, it's, it's really a foolish system that's just, has never really been looked at, and, uh, so, we're coming back. We're, we're making some adjustments there. We'll be coming in with some, uh, Council requ, some requests to Council as well.
So, when you say system, I think of two things. I think of system in terms of software, but I also think of system in terms of procedure internally.
It's procedures.
Okay.
We're looking at. The systems that were already really in place with Munis, with the software system we already have.
We're not looking at investing money.
No.
It's more of a, um, procedural change.
Exactly.
And is there a possibility that once this is done, I, if it comes to us, it may have a public hearing, I don't know, um, that we could maybe have some, uh, public meetings? That, uh, the, the local vendors, I know this has been a source for many of the Councilors.
Yeah, we've already had, we've already had one vendor, local vendor fair. It was very successful. Uh, but certainly, uh, we can, uh, we're hoping to have more of those on a regular basis, to talk about what we buy, what the process is to buy. Uh, one of the things we're looking to eliminate is, for instance, some of these contracts that, uh, we've talked about, that we, we literally sign off on, both the Auditor and myself sign off on hundreds of contracts a year. Uh, waste of paper, a waste of time. A lot of this can be done electronically in just purchase orders that serve the same purpose. And the state recognizes those purchase orders as serving that same purpose, so. But we, we can, we'll update the Council a little bit farther down the road as we implement those changes.
Okay, and it's, I think it's key, 'cause I know, uh, several Council have brought in motions to make sure we keep local vendors-
Right.
On the list, and it give, you know, do what we can to keep them, uh, keep them going. Councilman?
My question was actually gonna be about that issue and local vendors and, and the fair.
Right.
And we, and we had decent turnout at that.
We had a very good turnout for that, and good feedback too, from the, the vendors that were there.
Okay, good.
So, what is the process gonna be? You're still gonna put a, a blanket, blanket in place for some of the local vendors? So, if DPW needs to go and get, I don't know, a widget from a local vendor, they can go in. I know in the past, um, we were taking, uh, we were taking contracts or creating contracts off the state bid list, and they weren't in the city lol. They may have been, they, they may have been, you know, a little bit, a few pennies cheaper, but then they're spending all the gas and time to go out of town to get it, so, um...
Really, what, what we're doing in the terms of our process is looking for ways that are legal with regard to procurement laws by the state, to be able to give more contracts in larger amounts to, to local vendors and still satisfy bidding. An example that, that we believe we can, um, accomplish here is that, um, the city has taken the stance that once a vendor is used for five thousand dollars, um, they have to have a contract. And once that contract is signed, that's it. There's only one contract per vendor, per year. Uh, the Department of Revenue has indicated that as long as departments are making purchasing decisions independently, not colluding with one another, each department can have a legal contract with that, that local vendor. So, um, local vendor A could actually do ten thousand dollars' worth of work for the DPW, and another seventeen thousand dollars' worth of work for the Police Department, and five thousand for the Auditor's Department. So, it gives much more opportunity for local vendors.
And, but you're managing those contracts in your office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
If anything, it's gonna make it, everything tighter.
Right.
The, the system does a good job, and we're gonna let the system do with the job, what it was intended. Um, reports completed. Uh, two thousand and seven audit completed, on schedule for recap. Schedule A completed and on schedule. Um, the recap, we had such a great process working on the recap with a team approach. It went so smoothly. Um, I don't know that the team approach was ever used here before, but it worked wonderfully here. And that's, and you can, you can tell, uh, we had the tax rate set at such a timely basis. Everything is working like a well-oiled machine. Um, school end-of-year report. This is important in that we actually have signed agreements now with the school department. In two thousand and nine, we're going to meet net school spending.
Two thousand and eight?
Uh, two, no, in two thousand and nine, we're gonna meet net school spending.
In two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, we were within three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, two thousand and eight, we were within three hundred thousand dollars. And that's actually covering all the prior year deficits, which were at one point in time, two point nine million dollars. And it's a matter of reporting.
Mr. Chairman, now, how can that be? Because I thought we, you, you never knew in advance whether you complied with the present year, right? Don't you have to wait until the end of the year, or am I incorrect about that?
No, you do. But what happened was, we met, we have the agreement signed on what we're using for, uh, the city's expenses towards the net school spending. We re-looked at every single dollar. We went with the DOE's, um, um, procedures to actually come up with agreements between both sides, and doing calculations that we've, we've come up past the net school spending number for two thousand and nine. What happens with two thousand and nine is the budget, for two thousand and nine, is the actual expenses for two thousand and eight. So, that's why we know what the numbers are gonna be for two thousand and nine. We're going to roll this forward. So, the actuals for two thousand and nine become the budget for two thousand and ten. So, that's why we know the number.
All right. So, we, so we have, really, it's an agreement for the budget year we're in.
Correct.
And that'll be the figure that goes in next year's budget.
Correct. Shot follow, three fifty-one.
They're arguing over pennies over here.
Okay. At the end, okay, at the end of FY oh seven. We'll meet the, we'll meet the, okay, FY oh eight. I apologize.
This is, yeah, there was a-
It was the prior year that I was-
That's correct. There was a, uh, a press report that I just wanted to clear up too, that we, we're meeting the net school spending in oh eight. Uh, that, uh, I think that's significant, and-
Oh, absolutely. I was tracking schoolies, 'cause their school year, they call two thousand and eight, and it's six months off, but anyway. So, that was, that was, that was big. That was really big. It hasn't been done for a while, so. And the agreements, the signed agreements are in place. Um, free cash, it's, it's sent in. Department of Revenue was up to their ears with a lot of other cities and towns with their tax rate, so.
What do we send in?
Actually, Ellis was supposed to come here today, but then he got dragged off to a, another city.
What would, what did we send in to get certified?
Pardon me?
What was our number to get certified?
Uh, I think it was negative sixteen thousand.
Okay, so we're close to zero.
But it depends on when he looks at, you know, a couple of the deficits that I have the backup for, that the depart, that the school department has requested. So, it depends on the take that they're gonna have on those, so.
So, it's safe to say we're not gonna have any free cash, though?
No.
Okay.
Well, well, we knew it was-
Right.
We knew it wasn't gonna be positive. It was just a matter of how much we could narrow that gap in a tight fiscal year.
Exactly.
And we started the fiscal year with a negative-
Two point two.
Two point two.
Two point two million. So, if, if, if we look at sixteen thousand, unfortunately, that's a very good thing.
Absolutely. We shifted well over a million.
And there wasn't a lot of money left over.
Right.
Um, I think it's important to note also, um, for people watching, that typically, there'll be an appropriation for snow and ice that-
We covered it.
We, you cut, we covered it with this, with free cash, so, I mean, you know, presumably, it could've been more, however, um, I, I happen to think we, you know, it's an expense in that fiscal year, and it should be covered by any excess. Uh, unfortunately, DOR does let those communities that are extremely strapped, uh, put it on the tax rate outside of the budget. So, I, I, I do appreciate, and I think that's the right thing to do. If there's excess money, cover those expenses for that fiscal year. And to some degree, it's, you know, it's a net wash. However, we used to balance our budget on a projection of free cash from the fis, you know. And I know we're getting into budget stuff, so we'll have a finance- and I know we're getting into budget stuff, so we'll have a finance subcommittee meeting on that, but it's still, it's still a good thing that we're doing.
And the other important thing to remember is, what I've done is clean up a lot of accounts. Accounts that are in deficit were accounts that were covered up last year. They were truly in deficit, but they weren't shown in deficit. So, it's like the books are clean, they are what they are, the deficits are the deficits, the positive numbers are the positive numbers. And I can honestly say that was not the case at the end of last fiscal year.
Mrs. Chairman, I just wanted to note one thing from last year's, and we haven't seen, we haven't seen this year's audit yet, but if you look at the material weaknesses, that's exactly what you went over. And, you know, there's sort of stages that you go, you know, that you look at in this, in this management letter. Material weaknesses are red flags that go up, and then there are recommendations. And if you look at prior year, actually prior, two prior years, you've addressed all of those, and I can only imagine that we're going to look at a good audit. Presumably, with some issues, because there have been so many in the last two management letters, but I'm happy, we're all pleased to see that you addressed the three major weaknesses from last, from the last management letter, and that sets the stage for much better practices in the future.
Well, I'm assuming though, that that material weakness will still be there in the management letter. The fact of the matter is, I came here six months after the start of the fiscal year, so all those bad practices were going on. We've done a lot to improve this, but we still haven't gotten to the point. I mean, you walk ten miles in the wood, you've got to walk ten miles out. We're, we're on our way out, but I, I'm guessing that material weakness will still be there, but it'll be noted all the progress we've made.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
At this point, we're closing in on going over a lot of time. I think Counselor Martin wanted to make a motion there.
Well, this is very helpful, I was certainly aware of some of these ongoing things, but, but not all of them. And I think we may have been derelict in our charge to evaluate the auditor. So, I guess I would make a motion to request a report from the solicitor about what the evaluation procedure is, you know, you know, how, how it's done, whether there's public notice required and all that, and have that come back to the, to the Audit Clerk Oversight Subcommittee.
Drew, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes? And, Mr. Clerk?
Could I just ask that while the committee is considering an evaluation of the auditor, that they also consider the evaluation of the city clerk?
Can we take that under advisement? I don't have a problem, do you want to?
I, I'd amend the motion to describe the evaluation procedures for both offices.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Chair votes yes? And I guess it makes sense to take a motion to, to recess and report a progress? Me by Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Martin, all those in favor? Chair votes yes? So moved, thank you, thank you very much, Cheryl.
I will have to schedule it, see what's free.